Dieter, you ready? Good evening. It's six o'clock. I'm calling to, I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for May 24th, 2022. Thank you very much. Before we stand up for the pledge of allegiance tonight, I would like to do a statement regarding a couple of things that have happened in our nation in the last week. The entire Fountain community is shocked and saddened to hear the news about the recent mass shootings in Buffalo, New York at a grocery store, and today, a horrific attack on children at an elementary school in Texas. These senseless and evil acts leave us feeling saddened and heartbroken for the terrible loss of innocent life, and in deep sorrow for the families and friends of the victims of these attacks. It leaves us searching for answers about why such tragedies occur, how such hatred and cruelty can exist, and what we can do as a community and nation to prevent such terrible things from happening again. I don't have all the answers in this moment, but offer that in reflection of these tragedies, in this moment of mourning, we should reaffirm our resolve to do better to each other, to let our actions always be guided by kindness, dignity, and respect, and to choose the work of good over evil. While we are far from Buffalo and Uvalde, Texas, we can honor the victims in this way. We are Americans together and stand with those communities and commit this moment, met to, excuse me, and commit to these things. We can, in this moment, make an even further effort to be safe, peaceful, and a welcoming community that our friends, neighbors, and families deserve. Would you please join me in a moment of silence and reflection on behalf of the victims of these tragic events? Thank you. Thank you. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson. Mayor Protem Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Hinton.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Rick.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Present.
All seven members present.
Thank you very much. We're on to item 4.1, presentations. Department update, Fire Department, Chief Joyce.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, great city of Fountain, our citizens of Fountain. I'd like to open up first and now just like to say again, as I said before, thank you very much for this.
Excuse me.
I have a mic on now.
There you go.
Thank you. First brief, I guess I got some to learn here. Again, I'd like to open up and say thank you very much for this opportunity. It's been a great opportunity. I've been learning a lot here with our organization, with the city, and the history of the city, and it's just a great honor and value to myself, as well as I grow in this organization. So, going with that, I'd like to open up in the next slide, please. Is, I came in, I looked at, and where were we, where were we at right now? So, I looked over there with the values, I got to meet with each of our teams, and that was great. I spent some good quality time with our teams, and I asked them what their expectations were of me. And some of those expectations came out in these values, as you see up there. They were looking for someone that was trustworthy, were looking for someone who had empathy, accountability, mentorship. As you can see, is that we have in there is an acronym which we like to do in the fire service, is Team Services. So, these are the values that they came up with, and some of them are mirroring our City of Fountain's values in there with empathy and accountability. I couldn't get, you know, some, all of them in there, but we were able to fit some of them in there. So, that, that's the values that we came up, the vision, again, another acronym with the values integrity, strength, that's our mission here with the City of Fountain as well, strength, innovation, organization, never-ending commitment to the community. These are things that we're looking at. That mission statement, provide professional and reliable emergency services to the community we serve, Fountain. I'd like to go into this right here, is like we just did with the pledge allegiance. Have you guys ever seen that skit that Red Skelton does? And he breaks down every word of the pledge allegiance. It's amazing. So, we, we do the same thing here with his mission, because we want to make sure that it's intrinsic, that means something to us, is this mission statement in there, is provide. What does that mean? What's that word? What's the purpose behind it? And we look at that provide, we provide those emergency services to our citizens. And then we go and provide professional, reliable, emergency services. Professional, we break that word down. What does professional mean? You know, you go in the amateur and professional difference between those two, is an amateur is going to train until they get it right. Where the professional is going to train until they never get it wrong. That's the level of service we're trying to provide our community. And you go in there, reliable, it's not just rain, sleet, snow, but they can rely that we are going to strive for excellence in everything we do as we train every day. We're striving for the better us, the better me, the better you. And that's the professionalism, the reliability, they can count on your fire, your fire department here at Fountain. And those emergency services that we said, those are all those, the gamut of emergency services. But we break that down so we make it intrinsic. And I, I spoke with the firefighters, and I said, I said, "Look, guys," I go, "I don't want you to memorize this. I want it to become part of you, who you are, and make it intrinsic." And I don't want them to repeat it word for word, I want them to be able to explain it back to me what it means to them, because I just explained it to you what it means to me, but I want to be part of them. So, that's our mission statement, and then the strategy, as you look, you know, our strategy is professional development. Even though that's our strategic plan here, that's going to always be our strategy for years to come, is that professional development. And then, of course, the public trust. Everybody trusts the firefighter out there, and we want to keep that trust and keep earning that trust and be worthy. So, next slide, please. Is there any questions so far, what we have for the vision, mission? Thank you. So, again, so I had to ask myself in this department, I go three questions. Capability, capacity, and adequate response capability. And you're going to see underlying in each one of these things, you're going to see underlying in there is going to be automatic aid, mutual aid, that we can have underneath there, and those are going to be using our community partners to mitigate some of those things that we can't do, because we don't have the capability or the capacity to do that. And so, where am I going with that one? Capability, what does that mean? That's a good question. Capability, we look in there, do we have the efficient staffing? Do we have the right equipment? Do we have the right training? Are we properly trained to do what we say we can do? To answer one of these questions, when it comes to the EMS side of it, we have an outstanding, the stellar EMS program. That's what we have. We have a stellar program in there with the three ambulance staff 24/7, ALS. Those, they are guaranteed to be coming to that call, but now we go into the capability of a structured fire. In a structured fire, the magic number that we use in there, we come in there because of all the tasks and everything that has to be done, is we have to have 13 people respond to that. That's a battalion chief to be a commander. And then that's three engine companies, or four, five, but 12 firefighters. That would be in there company officers, driver operators, and firefighters to do those multiple tasks that have to happen within minutes to mitigate that incident. So, with that 13, if we're our minimum staffing currently right now, today, is 10, plus a battalion chief is 11. We have four, two on the engine, and two on the ambulance out of ones, and we duplicate that of twos, and then at threes, we're running two on the ambulance with a cross staff. And we have one battalion chief. So, going back again, like I was iterating there, how do we meet that? How do we manage that risk? How we let our community know we're doing that? Those are the agreements we have to have in place. Does that make sense? Is there any questions so far? So, now it gets into capacity. So, do we have the capacity to meet simultaneous calls? Again, going back to EMS, we can handle three right now, guaranteed, we got three ambulances. And we possibly could stretch it even with the other two engine companies up there, with two on those, to possibly hit five, if they're not already tied in with that ambulance on the crew, because they might be needed. Type of ALS call is, you might need four people there. But then, again, the answer is, we use our mutual aid, our automatic aid. But I want to highlight something on that. That's not a guarantee. No different than us, going mutual aid, go up there like we just did recently, Alteris Fire, Aikman Fire, they had the Garden of God's Fire, they had the Teller Fire. We had multiple incidents going on, we had medical aids going on. When we look at that, that capacity and using those things, but there are times when the City of Fountain Fire Department is going to be committed to their own mission, and they're going to have to turn that down. And we need to understand that, because 33% of the time, our community partners are not going to be able to come to us and vice versa. And so, how do we do that? And where I'm going to segue into the next slides, I don't want to capture here, and I'll explain those things when we get into the community risk assessment, and run cards and so on and so forth, and how we fix that problem. So, is there any questions so far? And again, so the capability, the adequate response capability, you know, can we do this with the required number of firefighters specified upon a time? I can assure you right now, we're going to meet that structured fire, I don't want you to worry that we're not, and we're going to get that mutual aid. We're going to get security for Carson, College Springs, or any of those departments, they're going to be coming in and helping us out, either going to the incident or covering our city. If you guys remember the fire in Banley, and we sent out some pictures and stuff like that, and you saw Fort Carson with a battalion chief out of Station One covering our city while we were on that fire. And that's the great partners we have in our community. Any questions so far? Outstanding, can we go to the next slide, please? All right, so what we're looking at here in the four quadrants, we're looking at here was, we're looking at personnel, our way ahead in the next 30 to 90 days, our current issues and concerns, and those long-range goals that we have. Talking about our staffing, the highlight that I would put over here is that we got 37 and 38, the good news is, is that we're looking down there, if you scroll all the way down to firefighter, fire, EMTP, that's paramedic, and then we have 11 and 12. We are going to be doing interviews within the next month, we do have two candidates. The interesting thing is, we were putting out with the vacancy announcement, and we're putting out an hourly wage, and with all the competition that we have here in our community, AMR just up in their wages, up to $25, $26 an hour, that's what people are looking at, their, our potential candidates, they're looking at that hourly wage, and they're going, "Oh, we're putting out $20.99. Oh, I'm not putting in for that job." But that's not true, in a sense, if you're going to look at the annual salary, because of the hours a firefighter works, we actually make more because of the number of hours we work compared to AMR. So, then we put out there the annual salary. We got two good, two solid candidates that have put in for it. So, that's the good news. And, you know, sometimes you have to look at that recruitment, how are we recruiting? Are we really telling the right story to get people to come to the City of Fountain? And so, that's how we changed that story. Any questions on personnel and that staffing there? And just so you know, the highlight again, you're seeing the part-timers, the per diems, and the volunteers, they're not in the calculation up there of 37, 38, because they augment in there when they can, when they can serve our community. So, going over to way ahead, you've already heard us speak about this, this is the stuff we spoke about last week. This is in our strategic plan, this is the health and wellness, professional development, and the standard operating procedures. And that's what we're working on right now, and we're actually solving some of those things as we speak. Madam Mayor, as you got to see yesterday, we had the yoga upstairs outstanding, that's great, that's, that's actually excellent for bringing in, for, it helps reduce injuries, stress, mental health, it, that is an excellent program, and, you know, we really appreciate it, and not just for the fire department, but I know our police department loves it as well.
We love it.
Right? And sorry, I did have some pictures, but I got them last night, and so, I'll, they'll be coming out the end of the week when Mr. Trader puts out his thing, what we've done. So, great pictures there. And Wellness Wednesdays, so our training captain, Captain Kuzmic, he's putting out something, every Wednesday over there that puts us in line, you know, sometimes we call it six minutes for safety, 10 minutes for safety, but Wellness Wednesdays is what we're calling it, and it gets people to focus on certain things, whatever those issues, concerns, something that might come up in the city, might be in the department, might be in the police department. And we'll look at that and see how it's affecting us, and see what we need to do with it, and then help our firefighters, you know, go forward with that. So, any questions so far? All right. Professional development, this one, I'm actually pretty excited about. I love that it's our program, again, it should be a strategic goal for us all the time, not just a strategic plan for one year, but this is what they're working on right now. Ignite Your Writing, we're going to have this instructor come in, she's very well-known, she's a battalion chief from Denver, I used her when I was the train chief at Fort Carson, then when I became the fire chief out of Presidio, I brought her out there for professional development, and now we're bringing in here. And so, what is she going to help us out, is information papers, the white paper, right? I think we're all familiar with that, if not, that's just getting the base down there, and that should be started at the first level, at our firefighter level, when getting them down there, so we're preparing them for the future. So, we're not just coming in and saying, "Hey, there's, here's the next product, chief, I want this next product." They're going to go down and give me white paper with the facts and the reason, and what their recommendations are, and the risk of inaction if we don't get that. What is the value to the city? What is the value to our citizens? And they're going to break that down, which is going to go into the memorandums, the next level would be our company officers would write that memo based on that information paper. So, they're learning how to go up to the next level, so we're not just focused on operations-based training, because that's what we do as a fire service. We take 96% of our budget, and we put it in training folks to be tactically and technically competent, which is a good thing, but we forget about the administrative side of things. And we forget about that, and with 96% of our budget over there, 96% of our problems happen with leadership, and it happens over there doing appraisals, you know, putting in quotes, and so on and so forth. So, we want to prepare them so that they can take the next step, and they're not afraid to take the next step, because they're going to build the confidence, because we've been developing over the years. So, it goes down, and the information briefs will be at a battalion chief, and then the decision brief is at a fire chief level, and they're going to be learning how to do those things as well. And this is just a few things that were highlighted on here, I could go all night on this, it's a great subject. Standard operating procedures, LexiPaul's coming in, this is, I've worked with LexiPaul when I was at Fort Carson, and at Presidio, and again now here, so this is actually pretty exciting for me. With that is SOPs, and you see right down there, actually, I've had five SOPs come across my desk in the past couple of days, because I do have, actually with that professional development, as they're writing, this technical writing, they're writing SOPs, because that's what LexiPaul's going to ask of us, they're going to say, "Hey, what do you have, chief?" And we're going to provide that to them, but they're going to, they're going to wordsmith those things, and they're also going to give us some things that have worked, so that we're, we stay legal, right? And then going over there, and you want us to be legal and doing things right. And then they have some things that we probably aren't thinking ourselves at our level, and they, because they're working with multiple departments across this nation, and so they bring in some stuff that we can look at. We don't have to take everything they say, but we can go over and look at it, maybe it might work for Fountain. So, that's a great thing that we brought, brought in there, and again, minimum staffing, going back, you know, to the previous slides, that capability, do we have the right staffing? And then we're, you know, with overtime, we want to make sure that our chief officers are not just bringing in overtime, but we have a policy of what that minimum staffing looks like, and that's what we meet, or if it's special events, and how that occurs. Which brings us down to our current issues and concerns. All right, so fire prevention. Public education, so that's a big subject right now, obviously, we just had, we met last week, we went to stage two, this thing came up, and here with my city partners, my mission partners here within the city, we're talking about how can we improve on the public education. Madam Mayor, that's what we're speaking about, and you give me some guidance over there. And we're looking at all those things, and we're looking, putting out videos and doing a seasonal campaign, so we can have those out there, and targeting using our Twitter, using our Facebook pages, and so on and so forth, and our Valley newspaper, but then getting those videos, and then targeting over there with our school districts and using District Eight to support with us. So, there's more to come on that, I'm pretty excited about that, we're having our first, you know, meeting here on June 9th, so I'm looking forward to that meeting. And then that community risk assessment, again, that's going to go back into those capability, capacity, and adequate capability response. And when we look at that risk assessment, that's going to tell us, what type of incidents does the City of Fountain have? What type of emergency we have? Where are those at? Because we're going to be able to come in here and show you maps and say, "Here's where they're all at." And we're going to, it's going to be all dotted up, and it's going to tell you what's going on there. So, when we go out there and we look, "Oh, we got to build another fire station," well, we're going to need that document right there. That's basically a thesis of what our community looks like, down the diversity and the type of incidents that we have, and which segues up down into the response configurations. So, when we look into those, and we're going to be working with these response cards, run cards, as we call them, and working there, making sure that we go back for that capacity, we, we want to make sure we have tiered mutual aid agreements and tiered response cards. So, what do I mean by that? Tiered is this, is that we'll have in our community risk assessment, and we'll have our demand zone set, and then what dispatch will have is this demand zone requires Station One to respond on that call. Station One's on a call. We need to make a tiered response. Who's up next? Right, who's up to bat? Okay, twos is out, who's coming next? It's mutual aid partner, so on and so forth. We have to have those tiered mutual aid agreements in place, so we can expand, because incidents expand. Think about, we just went up there with the Ackerman Fire up there, and they were going up there with Stetson Hills, Springs was going in, they're saying, "Hey, we got this going on, we got this going on," and they need to go over there, and dispatch was able to. able to get those other resources coming to them quickly by dispatching those resources, because that tiered response was put in those run cards. Does that make sense? Outstanding, outstanding. So again, I just spoke on the, on the mutual aid agreements. So it brings us over to long range. That's the long range over there, we're looking at bunk rooms, getting those, we're in a squad bay, similar to this room right here. Madam Mayor, you got to see that yesterday, and we want to make sure we go and put rooms, that's going to be something that, as we look at that Community Risk Assessment, I gave you our minimum staffing, I told you that we have two over threes, you know, but we want to make sure that when we're looking at ones and threes, that we're not billing to the current staffing today, because as this city grows, we're going to grow. And we want to make sure we don't go and put two rooms over at Station Three, we want to make sure the minimum staffing at that station, because it's a satellite station, will be four, I don't see any more than that, but we need to be planning for that and build those, those rooms as well. And that, again, will come out of that Community Risk Assessment. All right, American Medical Response. That's been in place, we have had an agreement, which kind of tears, you know, back over here to the mutual aid agreements, we've had an agreement with 2014, we're taking a deep dive on that right now, I've seen, yes, yes ma'am, yes ma'am, we're taking a deep dive, we've got more work to do, I don't have all the details right now, so I don't want to be spouting facts that aren't facts, right? But what we do know right now, it is definitely, we didn't look at it and see what right is, and make sure that we make those corrections, you know, into the future. So, and there's going to be a further briefing in the near future on that. And then going down to El Paso Emergency Service Authority, Mr. Applegate, thank you, I was out there, sorry I didn't recognize you at the ESA meeting, then I just talked to Ed Dell's, there is a grant money out there, ninety-six thousand dollars, but fifteen thousand is what they're looking at for the City of Fountain for Fire Department. So again, going back up there, to, I have our firefighters right now getting information papers in about what we want for our EMS program, up to fifteen thousand. But we're going to be at the ready, just in case others, cities don't want to go and touch that grant money, which we're going to kind of hope for, and we're going to be at the ready, just in case there's another fifteen grand, we're going to have more information papers, and more POs are at the ready, so we can go and say, we're ready, Fountain's ready, and we'll take that money. So that's my brief for you on this, you can go to the next slide. Is there any questions for me?
Yes, Chief, first, thank you for the briefing, I appreciate the information. Just want to encourage you, first say thanks for the Stage Two status, we definitely needed that. Yeah, we got snow, we got rain over the weekend, but that's still not going to solve our issue. I would highly encourage you to work on educating the public with regards to fireworks safety. As Chief Heber and Commander Frank would be happy to tell you, Fountain is not the most easy place to enforce fireworks restrictions. Okay?
They almost ran you out of town last year.
Yeah, and if they didn't run you out, they'd have burned you out. We, we definitely need to step up the education of the public to make sure that we're, the public is ready. You know, obviously, we can't predict the weather conditions, we don't know whether we're going to be under fireworks restrictions for the Fourth of July. I will tell you, having lived here for twenty-six years, fireworks do not happen just on Fourth of July. It's, it's a summer-long event, they will be starting probably this weekend, so the better we can educate the public, the less resistance we will have. So thank you for that.
That's an excellent recommendation, Mr. Rick, and Madam Mayor, you and I were talking about, that is something that our amazing Fire Marshal, Mike Gates is working on right now, and we're, we're currently doing that, but there was another thing, and I'm going to use yours, Madam Mayor, is that she also asked us about fireworks turning program as well. So we're going to be looking at that, Mr. Gates and our team, that we're going to be preparing for our June ninth meeting, to get in there and look at that, we're going to be working with Casey Cameron, Lisa Schneider, as well as getting these videos out, but having those things over there. I don't think we're going to turn the entire public, but if we can at least turn ten percent, then maybe we can bring, you know, some calm to our community over this beautiful Fourth of July, because we all love fireworks. Any other questions?
Councilmember Estes?
I just have a question on your mutual aid, I know we work really well with security in Hanover, what are we doing with Colorado Springs?
Yes, ma'am, that's an excellent question. I am looking at each of our agreements that we have in place, even with Fort Carson's, and looking at those run cards, because, let's talk about hazmat, I don't think the City of Fountain Fire Department needs a Type One hazmat team when we got Fort Carson across the freeway, and we got Colorado Springs Station fourteen, we have a Type One, maybe training, we can be trained in it, but yes, having those agreements in there so that we can utilize those resources, you know, to benefit our citizens here, because we do have a rail that comes through, and they do carry some products in there, that could be devastating if we're not prepared. And so I'm thinking that there, but yes, ma'am. And also El Paso County, and all our community partners, we're going to be updating all those agreements, ma'am, so yes, we'll have great relationships.
I know that we tend to go there, and they tend not to come down here, so I just want to, you know, keep that in our mind too, when we're working on those agreements.
Yes, ma'am, and that'll be education for our team as well, because I have talked to our team as well, is because when we go in that structured fire, and we're putting all our resources on that structured fire, going back to capacity, who's coming in? And so some questions I'm asking, I can make the argument that it's the right thing to put Fountain Fire resources on the structured fire, because we all work seamlessly with each other, makes sense. However, I bring in a mutual aid resource, and I put them at Station One, who better to respond to our city than our own, when we already work seamlessly with Colorado Springs, where they can come to the incident, and they can run underneath our command, and we keep our own house open with our personnel, because they're going to make that aggregate response time faster than our community partners. Thank you for that question, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions from anybody? Councilmember Hinton?
So Chief, thank you for the brief, I appreciate that. I do appreciate about the education, we've learned a lot of things from, from history in the Boulder Counting Fire, you know, what I've seen in the news, that most people, when they, they lost all their stuff, they were uninsured, they didn't have enough to cover to rebuild, and it's going to take a lot of time for that community to rebuild that. But, so as we talk about the education, that's another piece we need to be talking to our residents about, making sure, you know, it's a personal choice for your insurance and adding that, and maybe add a couple of dollars here or there, but let's, let's make sure that we talk about that, as far as, do you have enough coverage in the event likelihood that happens, God forbid, but making sure that we're covered on that. Yeah.
Yes, sir, that's an excellent question, because we've learned a lot of lessons responding out of state and going on these big incidents, and we were down there, and we're rescuing people, you know, from Hurricane Katrina, we're bringing these folks in, and we're getting in there, and we're putting them in shelters, and we're thinking, we saved the day. By day two, day three, they're coming up, and they're asking those same questions, what now, what do I do with my house, how's that work? So we're working better with our insurance companies, making sure that they're coming in, so they can answer those questions, because we, as firefighters, we're not trained in there. But we can do, as you're saying, put in our public education, and we can put that as a caveat to our training, as to what they can do in there, because it even kind of segues into what you were saying, Madam Mayor, yesterday, is like, even with our shelters, you had some challenges with the shelters that you had to do, I have had same, similar challenges over there. Where do I bring my horses? Where do I bring my cattle? What do I do with this? What's next? One of the worst things I faced as a captain over there at Fort Carson after T eight twenty-five Fire, was that people left their community off the Highway one fifteen, they went shopping, they did their day-to-day things, they take regular medications, and that they need, now we're not allowing them to go back in the community. Hospitals just don't give you medications, it has to be an emergency, and so we had to make those type of accommodations. So those are going to be some things that we're going to be looking in there, is being prepared, and we call it ready, set, go. Okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief, appreciate it.
I, yeah, and I sent Scott a list of some grants that, bills that were passed this last session, that if the governor signs them, there's some grants in them, and one of them is for outreach, was one of the suggestions in a meeting. So he can get you those bill numbers, and we can research it, and see if there's anything that, that we might qualify for with those, so, because I was really surprised to see outreach on it, and that, that excited me, especially after we just talked about it, so, yeah. All right, is there any questions from anybody in the audience? Okay. Thank you so much for coming in tonight, that's a lot of information, and it sounds like you're doing a lot of great work over there in a short time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, Council.
All right. All right, next up for presentations is Mr. Al Lender for Police Officer Recognition. Mr. Lender? And if I can get you to push the mic on before you start. I'm not sure, because I haven't been on that side of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I shut it off, I apologize.
That's okay.
Good evening, Mrs. Thompson, and Council, and staff, and everybody who's here tonight, I'm Al Lender, REA Road Fountain, and I'm here representing Post Five of the American Legion. Post Five is in the Springs, we're on the corner of Cascade and Platt, Ms. Estes was there a few years ago, we were looking at the building for historical, so she's familiar with it. Post Five is, like I said, in the Springs, we have posts all over. The way the American Legion works is we have individual posts, and then we have a district commander, and tonight I'm honored to have our State Commander, Chris Caso, with his dog, and Commander is also a retired Army Special Forces. There's four pillars with the American Legion, with veterans, defense, Americanism, and youth, and tonight we're here on one of those subjects. Over the years, the American Legion Post Five has been here, and we've given awards to the Youth Council, to Dietra Duncan, two years ago at Fountain Fort Carson, the senior class with Rachel Johnson, Brian Johnson's daughter, was awarded with her classmates for giving the Vietnam, or Vietnam, the Veterans Memorial on the side of the building, she was given that. Prior to that, the American Legion Post Five donated to the Fountain Fire Department when Ms. Jill Grubbs contacted me and told me they were looking for coats for kids, we donated seven hundred and fifty dollars to that cause. Tonight, I'm proud to introduce some members of my post, because without these people, these things wouldn't happen. As you know, the motorcycle season is here, you see riders out there, American Legion riders, matter of fact, this weekend, I believe it is, the Run For The Wall is coming through, and they'll be stopping here at the Fire Department, I do believe. These are things that we do, you also see us in front of Walmarts, or Sam's Club, selling hot dogs and hamburgers, and everything that we bring in, we give back to the community, not only veterans. So tonight with me, I want to introduce you is Eric DeVault. Eric DeVault is the past Commander of Post Five, and he's going to be the new District Seven Commander, he's moving up the ranks. Andrea Foss, come on up, Andrea Finnegan Foss, she's my Junior Vice Commander of Post Five. The rest I would like to introduce from the seats. Oh, this is my daughter Renee, she's going to be taking pictures and running around, so...
She's a star.
Ma'am, I'm sorry to turn my back on you, but I have to introduce. Vice President of American Legion Riders of Post Five is Bulldog Jeff Rager. Andrea's husband, Jason Foss, is the Adjutant of Post Five, he recently, last week, I believe, or a week ago, retired from the United States Air Force after twenty-something years. In the back is Tim Pettigrew, and he's also retired Army. So tonight, I want to discuss about our working dogs, as you see tonight, my Commander has his guide dog with him, he's always there, and we have, I believe, out in the hallway, Officer Brett Ryder, and he has one of the dogs from the Fountain Police Department, I guess he's trained for sniffing drugs and all kinds of stuff, he's here tonight for you all to see. I thank you Brett Ryder, Officer, and K-9 Goose is his companion and partner.
There might have been a Top Gun theme. A Top Gun.
Also here tonight are K-9 Officers, Sergeant Ken Owens, who is in charge of the K-9 Division, he's in the back. So let's get right down to why we're here tonight. Sergeant Galen Steele, would you come forward?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you tonight. We are here tonight to recognize the contribution Sergeant Galen Steele has made to the City of Fountain and the entire Fountain community. Sergeant Steele has dedicated over twenty years to the safety and welfare of the Fountain community. Sergeant Steele has selflessly served the community during this time as a patrol officer, traffic corporal, and eventually becoming Fountain's first traffic sergeant. Sergeant Steele's passion for traffic safety and enforcement has made an enormous impact on the community, from working in school zones, to addressing traffic concerns of individual citizens. Sergeant Steele's dedication to traffic safety has been vital to the well-being of the city. He has constantly worked with other agencies at the city, county, and state levels to address traffic safeties and concerns. He has personally tackled multiple issues throughout the city, some of these include renovations at intersections to make them both safer for both motorists and pedestrians. Sergeant Steele has also worked tirelessly with both, both District Eight and District Three schools to ensure that safety of the students through signage and marking school zones. Sergeant Steele's work has not been to benefit himself or seek recognition, he has worked diligently to ensure the safety of others and the benefit of this wonderful community. His hard work has made the roads safer for this great community. The American Legion serves not only veterans and their families, but the communities we reside in. It is our honor to recognize local community members who inspire us through their community service. Sergeant Steele's example is something we should all strive to emulate. Please join me in presenting the American Legion Medal of Merit to Sergeant Galen Steele.
The American Legion presents a certificate to Sergeant Steele, City of Fountain Police Department, in recognition of your outstanding service and contributions over twenty years of service as a Fountain Police Officer. Your dedication and support to the veteran community represents the values of the American Legion. These outstanding qualities lead to the awarding of the American Legion Medal of Merit, presented today by American Legion PFC Floyd Lindstrom, Post Five, Colorado Springs, this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty twenty-two, Commander Hendricks' Adjutant Fossi.
So, we can't give awards to police officers, we can't give gifts to police officers, so what we are going to do is donate seven hundred and fifty dollars to Fountain Police Department Canines. In the name of Sergeant Steele and in his honor. Thank you, Mayor.
Galen, are you going to do a speech?
Thank you, American Legion.
Go ahead, Galen, go ahead, grab that microphone. So, so the only secret that's ever withheld in the history of the Fountain Police Department is Galen was getting this award tonight, he tried very hard to uncover why he was here, hopefully it was a surprise to you, congratulations, my friend, the floor is yours.
Thank you, I'm not really one for speeches, as everybody knows, but it's been a fun twenty years, there's been some stuff, but it's been great, especially with the public support of the Fountain citizens, they're the ones that actually made it a smooth ride.
They're the ones that actually made it a smooth ride, so thank you.
Thank you, American Legion. Very much appreciative. Thank you. Come back anytime. You don't even have to bring money. Just come. Come visit. All right, that takes us on to item 4.2, Board Commission and Committee Appointments. We have none tonight. So that takes us on to item five, City Council Agenda Requests. City Council shall use this time to request any items for future consideration. And I'm going to start to my right tonight, Councilmember Duncan.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Councilmember Applegate?
I have no requests at this time.
Councilmember Estes?
No requests.
Councilmember Hinton?
No requests.
Councilmember Corey?
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Rick?
No requests, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Hope the rest of the meeting goes that fast. All right, item number six, Public to Be Heard. Citizens, I don't have any cards still yet, so do we have anything tonight? Okay. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. And we have, it says Loheinoz Gonzalez, not Commissioner Gonzalez. So you're here as a private citizen tonight? You can wear two hats at once. Go ahead. All right.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Thompson, council members, Loheinoz Gonzalez. First off, kind of wanted to make some highlights from VFW 6461. With Memorial Day coming up, I know there's several events and I'm sure that you'll highlight later as well. But the VFW does have their flag raising at 11:00. They'll have a little ceremony as well for Memorial Day at 11:15. And then at noon, they'll have a cookout afterwards, if anybody wants to stop by the VFW on Monday. And then as a county commissioner, I did want to say thank you for all the great work you're doing down here. And I did want to highlight a couple of things. One, a good thing, of course, save the date. The El Paso County Fair will be happening from the 16th of July to the 23rd of July. So a little early heads up, but please put that on your calendars. It's going to be great events. And then the other one, and it was already kind of touched on, was with the, you know, notwithstanding the nice winter storm that we had and rain, much needed. We've been extremely dry, unincorporated remains in a stage-two fire restrictions under the sheriff. And I just encourage everybody to continue to be fire safe in the county. And what we're asking people to do is that you also go to our elpasoco.com website and there is information there, wildfire mitigation, and a button that allows you to go and sign up for your peak alerts. So a lot of information, emergency information that residents might be able to use. And again, if you're seeing anything, any illegal activities in terms of related to fire restriction violations, please call your local authorities, non-emergency numbers, but make sure that we call those in because I'm very concerned about a dangerous fire season. So that's all I have as a county commissioner, and I hope to see many great faces, happy faces, at our county fair this year. Thank you.
You guys have any, now can you put your commissioner hat on and we can grill you?
Oh, okay. I will, I will, Paul, keep it on for now.
Does anybody have any questions for him as a commissioner, anything going on in the county? Are we still on the end of June opening for the roundabout, hopefully?
I believe so. I will have to double check to see if there's any changes there.
Okay, and the issue at the Willow Springs Pond?
Oh, sure.
With the PFOS, do you have the signage up there for not eating the fish?
I believe it's up. I will have to double check. I didn't stop by there. So for the public knowledge, in March, we did receive notification from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that in late 2020, they tested several ponds across the state. One was Willow Springs Pond. That makes sense because of the Peterson, then, Air Force Base concerns with PFOS. And so they did test, they tested the fish that they caught there and they had high elevated levels of PFOS. And unfortunately, it took a very long time for them to get that information out and we only found out about it in March. So it took them a little over a year to get that information. Part of it was because they didn't have state lab equipment. They collaborated with, I forgot, one of the universities to get the information. The state also does not have any restrictions or guidance on restrictions if there is elevated levels in, say, fish caught from a pond. What they did, they looked at six neighboring states across the country that do have things, levels in place. And for those levels, the Willow Springs Ponds and the other two ponds were in that range that they recommended not consuming or having some restrictions. And so CDPHE asked El Paso County to put up some signage up there. Unfortunately, it did also mean that the state parking wildlife or... To not stock the pond. And so unfortunately, as a lot of people know, we had to cancel the county's annual youth fishing derby because it would not have a stocked pond. So that's what we have right now. If the signs aren't up now, they are, will be up very soon. I believe they are up, and I did write about this in the Fountain Valley newspaper a couple of weeks ago to make sure that residents know. And the things that I did in response to this, as soon as I found out, I sent information to CDPHE, the governor, our senators, and our congressmen to see, well, if we do have elevated levels in the pond and the fish, what are we doing to fund mitigation? And so I've been working with the center. I got an actual sit-down. I actually got to speak to Senator Bennett on this issue and had to sit down with, well, via Zoom, with one of his representatives, CDPHE leadership, and discuss some options. And so we are requesting that they attempt to do some sort of funding. I have not responded, I got a response to anything in terms of specifics, but they said they will look into what responses they can do. Because again, this one is going to be very clear, a situation that was most likely a result of Peterson Space Force Base's previous work with the firefighting foam that has leached in, as we know, into the wild aquifer that is likely leached into the pond. And so we're requesting that federal level to look into this.
Yeah, because, and just please, I believe Councilmember Estes already has expressed her frustration with CDPHE and the fact that, you know, his big test is going on and the study and everything and you, once again, you find out about it, you know, not from them. And we really need to be kept in the loop of any type of information that's going on as far as, so people can understand this better, so.
Yeah, one of the things I was a little concerned about was the public generally found out about this through an op-ed piece from Grand Junction, I think, versus CDPHE putting out anything official, so.
And we thought we were past that. We thought we had better relationship.
And so again, I had, early on, gotten all the contacts, have responded out to all the, our congressional delegation to get out on this as early as we can.
So I did have a citizen ask me an interesting question. Since the fish aren't going to be eating the mosquitoes, are you going to be doing mosquito abatement at that pond this year?
I can look into that.
Okay. I think, you know, because people like to go there and walk and the fish do really keep on top of that. So Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah. Probably as everybody knows, you're running for mayor of Colorado Springs. And I wish you well on that, but if it does come to fruition there, we will miss you as our county commissioner because you ran a great county commissioner.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Duncan?
Commissioner Gonzalez, the signs are at the pond.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Estes?
My concern also with it is that they did that one pond and there's obviously other ones downstream. And I asked them if they were going to be doing any further testing and they said, no. They have no funding, but that might be something that we need to push to because it's probably not just in that pond and if somebody's fishing further south, that is a concern to me.
And that was one of my concerns was, as I sent these letters, I did not, I received a response from the governor that said, we have received your email. CDPHE director only responded back to my request after I CC'd the governor. And we did get the Zoom meeting. And so again, I would ask CDPHE to be a little more responsive to our inquiries. And I'll continue to get back with them, but it's been several weeks and I still have not heard back from the governor's office.
Well, any help we can give you in that effort, you know, we unfortunately are really good at PFOS and PFOS down here.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
So any help we can give, any push we can give. Is Willow Springs Pond is run by the county, but it is in the city of Fountain. So anything we can do to add to that voice at the table, we're more than happy to do.
Thank you. And I did receive one or two calls after I, the notification or I put the article out. One was very specific to like, well, how does this affect the water? So I want to reiterate to everybody, the water districts for Fountain, Security, Widefield, and Stratmore Hills is absolutely perfectly safe to drink. They've done mitigation efforts and all the filtration systems that have been placed into all the water districts. And so they are, I believe, all at non-detect for PFOS and all the drinking water.
Well, we can't speak for others, but we know Fountain is.
Right, but through my knowledge, I know that the others are generally in that level. So I do want to reiterate that because I did receive a call from a concerned citizen when they saw the article about the drinking water. So I did want to say all the water districts have been on filtration system and doing a great job with that.
Right, thank you. And yeah, you can help us get that message out. That'd be great too because you still have people that are very concerned about it, understandably.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight and letting us give you the five-minute.
No, no problem. Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, that's the only card I have. Is there any other citizens in the audience that didn't turn a card in that wanted to say anything? All right, not seeing anybody bounding up. We will move on to the consent agenda. Item number seven, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. So we have seven A, we have items seven A through E. And I got Councilmember Rick's light on?
Request to pull item A.
Okay, pull item A. Is there any other items anyone would like to pull off? Okay, not seeing anybody. Is anybody like to make a motion to, for the consent agenda by taking M, but removing item A? Councilmember Corey?
Motion to approve consent agenda items seven B through E.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent agenda, items seven B through E. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to item eight, Old Business. Eight A, second reading of Ordinance 1776 and ordinance establishing a new chapter, Chapter 3.17, within Title III, Revenue and Finance of the Fountain Municipal Code Establishing Transportation Impact Fees. You're not Brandy.
I'm not.
I'm good.
She's here, though, if you have any questions.
Mayor obvious.
As you'll remember, this is the ordinance establishing the authority for the city of Fountain to collect that transportation impact fee. Later on this evening, you have on New Business a resolution to set the amount of that fee, but this is the ordinance establishing that authority. So there's been no changes since last reading and Brandy and I are here for any questions.
All right, are there any questions from any council members? Councilmember Duncan?
I have a question. The, there is a IRS ruling 2002-9. And it says state and local impact fees can be eligible for basis for low-income housing tax credit projects. Does that apply to Fountain?
Boy, I'm not going to know off the top of my head. So will you give me that citation again?
It is IRS ruling 2002-9. And it states that the state and local impact fees can be eligible basis for low-income housing tax credit projects. And I wanted to know, are we able to use those fees for anything here in Fountain when it comes to low income?
You know, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to look that up, Ms. Duncan.
Okay, and we can get back to that question. And who pays the impact fees?
Usually, the, either the property owner or the, or the business owner. So most of the time, they're going to be the same, but if you have a tenant coming in that's operating a new business, I think that's sort of between them and the property owner. But one of those two would be responsible for it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, are there any other questions? I'm wondering, based off Councilmember Duncan's question, if the tax credits you're referring to are the ones that can be used when some of that affordable housing, it's not a tax credit in terms of we think of it, they're the ones that they use when they go to like Chaffa to get the tax credits for building the low-income housing. So it isn't something that directly comes back to the city. I'm wondering if that's the tax credits.
That's not it.
That's not it? Okay, okay. Well, I will be just as curious about the answers as everybody else, so that's.
So Ms. Duncan, I don't know if that changes your opinion on voting, if you'd like to delay the vote or if I could answer that question for you later or at some point during the meeting?
No, it doesn't change my vote. I just want to know, are we able to use that for any fees for tax credits here in Fountain?
Okay, okay. I will look into that question then for you.
Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, because it's a transportation fee, wouldn't it be used for transportation purposes, roads, other things?
Yeah, and that's what we, we collect the fee and that's what needs to be spent on and more specifically, the future needs. As the city continues to grow, it has to be spent on future infrastructure for that growth.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Okay. Any questions from anybody in the audience? Any other council members? Councilmember Applegate?
Ready for motion?
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion that we approve Ordinance 1776.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Ordinance 1776. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. All right, thank you very much. We're going to go on to item nine A, consideration of items removed from the consent agenda. And Councilmember Rick, you asked to have item A, the minutes removed.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. On the first page, under the roll call, it shows that I attended the last meeting via the internet. I was physically here, so I would ask that be corrected. And unless someone else has any objection, I move to approve the reading of the minutes. As amended, thank you.
I second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to, for the amended minutes. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Yep, I know. We're getting there. Council, I'm sorry to keep you waiting. If there's any way that we can do a verbal vote, I'll take vote by call. Absolutely, let's move ahead. Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried. Thank you. We will move on to item nine B while they reset over there. Resolution number twenty-two dash zero two six, a resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year 2022 budgeted funds. John Lewis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. John Lewis, City of Fountain Finance Director. And Yolanda, if you could bring up the budget slides, please, there we go, thank you. So as you are aware, you adopted a budget for, for this year, 2022, back on October twenty-sixth, 2021. You did amend the budget on March fifteenth, 2022, for certain items, capital items that were budgeted in '21 but not spent in '21, so we carried them forward to 2022.
Excuse me one second. Can I get Sylvia to turn off her mic? That's okay.
And, and also some items that were included in that first supplemental budget request. And since March fifteenth, we've been made aware of additional expenditures that need to be made and/or additional revenue that has been received that is meant for a, a certain purpose. And of course, before we spend that revenue that's coming in, we need your approval to spend it. And the good news is, most of the money that we're asking for has, is the result of grants that have come in. We're therefore recommending a formal approval by City Council to amend the budgets for the 2022 general water, electric, transportation, and street resurfacing funds for those additional items. Yolanda, if we could go on to the next slide, which is the beginning of exhibit A. You see here that for the general fund, we have a number of grants, a CDBG grant for eighty-six thousand five twenty-eight, from PPA CG, we have a Front Range Trail Grant for three hundred and ninety-one thousand one sixty-six, and we also have another, a CDOT grant for two hundred thousand for the Carson Boulevard Intersection Design and Engineering. So obviously, we would like your approval to, to spend the dollars that are required for, for those grants. In addition, we found that there's additional amounts required for the user fees on the radio maintenance. We need an additional eight thousand to complete the Ohio and Maine intersection. We also would like twenty-five thousand for radio maintenance on the SRO repeaters so that the radios would work throughout the school buildings. We found that they're not working throughout the school buildings. The total cost is sixty-two thousand, our share is twenty-five thousand. In addition, per objective PS3 of the strategic plan, there's training that needs to be done with the Police Department in first responders for mental health and resiliency program. This is a strategic objective, and the Police Department has asked that we take that from salaries from the vacancy savings so that it, it's not requiring additional dollars. We, we found that for the Mack trucks, the two tandem Mack trucks that we ordered, they've come back and said, well, we're, we're still working on your trucks, but due to increased costs, there's going to be a surcharge of eight thousand dollars. So, so we have to pay that in order to get those trucks. If we wait on the trucks, the cost will be even higher. Last but not least, Neighborhood Services has found some increased pickup and, of, of the trash and the recycling, so there's an additional three thousand needed for trash removal. So all those expenditures are seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand six ninety-four. However, the, the net decrease impact to the unrestricted reserves is only sixty thousand dollars. Again, that's for the general fund. Yolanda, if we could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. We, it has been announced that we are receiving that grant, and we have the final amount from the Air Force for the steel structure surrounding the Agapark Treatment Plant. That's one million six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Now, we have an additional seventy-seven three five five that we need to spend on buildings. And we also, out of ARPA funds, a hundred and forty-five thousand needs to be spent on design services for the thirty-six inch water transmission main. So the increase in net position, although it says that it's one million four hundred and two six forty-five, the carryforward that you approved back in March did include the expenditure for that building, so, so that, that could be a little bit misleading. We, you've approved the one million five plus in the expenditure back in March, and now we're including the revenue here. The, the increase in net position will also change slightly when we transfer the ARPA funds from the general fund over to the water fund to take care of that thirty-six inch water main. The electric fund, the Fleet Department, as you know, is still in the electric fund, will be taking it out of that for the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. And they are requesting eight thousand for a pressure washer, for washing the vehicles because the pressure washer is not really working properly. Yolanda, please, the next slide. The transportation fund, they do have the money for a new bus, they have purchased a new bus, and they'll be, we, we purchased one last year, we're purchasing one this year and another next year. So we do need the hundred and thirty-four thousand included in, in the budget. As far as the street resurfacing fund, we are receiving some miscellaneous revenue from the Dewey Solar Company for the road use fee for damage and wear for the, the big solar project. And so we'd like to spend that hundred and thirty-three thousand on some of the maintenance service contracts of street resurfacing. And in addition, due to the increased amount of sales tax that we received last year, we'd like to add another seventy-five thousand to the service contracts for street resurfacing, particularly in light of the fact that the asphalt costs have increased by so much. So with, with all of that, again, we ask that you approve this supplementary budget. A reminder, this is a standard process and a best practice for ensuring that only items appropriated by you, City Council, are spent. And with that, I would ask for approval of resolution twenty-two dash oh two six.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions first? Councilmember Rick?
Yes, and I guess this would probably be best directed at Chief Heber. With regard to the SRO repeaters, are we going to be able to get those installed before the next school year starts in August?
Yeah, that's exactly the plan. The only school that's permanently impacted right now in light of today's activities is about middle to newest school to biggest, and when it was built, there just wasn't foresight that we needed a repeater. We've discovered that this year. Plan with the cost sharing as we've dictated, as soon as school's out, it will begin the installation of that repeater, and will be operational for next year.
Okay, and the District Eight is contributing?
That's correct. They're contributing approximately forty-five, forty thousand of the entire share.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Brandy? You can nod from there, I guess. On the CDOT grant that we got for two hundred thousand dollars and then for the redesigning of Carson, is that designed already?
Good evening, Brandy Williams, City Engineer. We actually signed the contract for that last week. Wilson and Company has scheduled the survey work to start next week, and Jason Nelson and CDOT are aware that all of that is in process.
Okay, that two hundred thousand dollars is just for the design?
No, actually, just sixty-five thousand dollars is for the design, and then the remaining portion is going to the Jimmy Camp Ohio Traffic Signal.
Okay, so when we get the design done for Carson, are we going to, going to be back for, you're telling us what it's going to cost then?
So they have budgeted another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a.
Who's they?
CDOT.
Okay.
To do the design. This is just a preliminary concept that we can give to CDOT so that they can present it to their people. And then they have budgeted another two point two five million dollars to build it.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Glad to see that going forward.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, does anybody else have any further questions?
Mayor, just wanted quickly, if I could add to that, Carson, just for everybody's general knowledge, when we were having those discussions with CDOT when we closed Southmore, there was zero plan for them to build anything there. So that was through a lot of Brandy's work with CDOT and things. So that two and a half million dollars that they have now found money for is due to her hard work and her relationships with CDOT, PPA CG. So I just want to let everybody know, when I first made those calls on Southmore, it was, nothing's going to be done there, good luck, and it's turned into that. So that's just a little background on that.
All right, good job, Brandy. All righty, so, does anybody like to entertain a motion for this? Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve resolution number twenty-two dash zero two six.
Councilmember Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from council? Seeing none, please vote. Seven yes, motion carried. Okay, item nine C, a report to the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, regarding the assessment of the city's financial instruments. Mr. Lewis, it's your night.
Thank you again, council, I guess so. Yolanda, if you would go to the next slide, please. Thank you. In the 2022 to 2024 strategic plan, strategic objective F3 directed city staff to complete an assessment of the city's various financial instruments. And so that includes the investments that we have in, in addition to the, the debts, the bonds, the leases, et cetera. In order to determine the opportunities to achieve cost savings where and when possible and diversify the city's financial resources, that, that is why that objective was created. And this report summarizes the analysis findings and actions taken by the city to accomplish this objective. This is actually, John Chelsmy, the first completed objective of the strategic plan, and had the earliest due date, so here we are. For the past few years, interest rates, as you know, have been at historic lows, and this has been a great advantage for entities incurring debt. However, a great disadvantage for entities with restrictive and very conservative investment policies, and those wishing to invest their excess cash. The steps taken by the city's finance department will result in increased investment earnings and possible further reductions in debt costs. So if we go to the next slide, please. Our pooled cash and excess reserves have been invested in accordance with our financial policies and in accordance with state regulation. Differences in rates between various investments have been minimal, and corporate bond investments have been more profitable but somewhat risky. So we have taken a very conservative approach to our cash investments over the past few years and have purposely not been very active in moving cash between accounts or reinvesting in long-term, low-rated bonds with low-interest rates. Next slide, please. Currently, we service about seventy million dollars' worth of debt. Approximately ninety percent of that is on the utilities books. The remaining ten percent is carried by the general fund in the form of leases on buildings, vehicles, and technological equipment. And this general fund debt must be appropriated on an annual basis, and, and it is, it's always included in our budgets. Approximately twenty million of the utilities debt has been refinanced at lower interest rates over the past two years, resulting in approximately three point six million of savings over the next twenty-one years, which equates to about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of savings per year. The procedures we followed for this assessment, well, we reviewed current policies and procedures for investing and for issuing debt. We had numerous discussions with Piper Sandler, UMB Bank, and two outside investment groups. We confirmed that our future refinancing opportunities are there, but we're not ready to move to them. We also talked to our, our reinvesting broker, because a lot of our pooled cash that is for investments is also with Piper Sandler, and, and we worked with that broker and talked about the past investing environment. And, you know, in the past, that's, it's allowed for some re-ease in reinvesting through our broker with Piper Sandler, particularly when we're reinvesting. So long-term bond investments were the highest yielding strategies in the past. That is not the case right now. Initiatives and actions taken, the volunteer fire pension funds have been moved to a higher interest rate-bearing account. We don't need to take very much money out of that on an annual basis, so we've got it in something that's close to a, a CD now, and when we need to move a small amount of money, we can still do that. We recalculated the excess pooled cash as compared to the necessary cash outflows and moved the resultant excess cash to a CSafe, that's the name of, of the investment broker, CSafe, higher interest rate account. The maturing bonds in our investment account were reinvested in cash over the past six months. So there are a few bonds that we had invested in in the past, they had staggered rates, so some came, some of them were two years to maturity, some were three years to maturity. As they came due this past year, we just kept them in cash because we didn't want to reinvest in bonds at a real low interest rate when we knew that the Fed was going to be increasing rates. So once the Fed did increase rates, we reinvested most of the cash in short-term U.S. Treasuries and a high, a highly-rated corporate bond that had fairly high interest rates that matures next fall. And we are waiting for the inevitable rise in interest rates that we know are, are coming from the Fed, and therefore higher long-term rates before we reinvest in these longer-term investments. As you are aware, we have successfully refinanced our 2011 and 2013 water bonds. We continue to bid out our leases to obtain the best rates, and we are investigating the concept of a master lease agreement that will allow us to lease at, at low rates and less expensively and move for, for different years. So for example, rather than taking a lease out for ten years, we can take it out for four years and suddenly switch as rates become lower or keep it at that ten-year rate. So summary of cost savings and, and increased earnings. As indicated earlier, the refinancing of the water bonds has resulted in approximately a hundred and seventy thousand in annual savings to the water fund. The estimated impact to the volunteer fire pension fund will be a few additional thousands of dollars annually, and the changes to our portfolio and increased monitoring of cash flows should generate approximately an additional hundred thousand dollars in investment earnings across. approximately an additional $100,000 in investment earnings across all funds in just the next 12 months. So with that, we will continue to monitor opportunities to increase investment earnings and decrease our cost of burning, cost of borrowing, excuse me. And as always, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the hard work.
Sure.
It's a lot of research, so thank you very much. And we can understand it. So, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, counsel.
All right. All right, thank you for that report, very much. Appreciate it. And if anybody thinks of any questions later on, I'm sure you've got John Lewis's email. Okay, Item 9D, authorizing the consolidation of two currently funded Neighborhood Services Department part-time positions into one Neighborhood Services Code Compliance Officer Two in order to help facilitate the addition of critical personnel needs in the department. Ms. Tingley?
Thank you. As you know, we've had several departments come and ask us basically the same thing. We're having trouble filling part-time positions. They're just, they're just not happening. And during 21, the year 2021 and '22, we were faced with a turnover in Neighborhood Service personnel, leaving only two officers to oversee the city's needs. We have been able to fill three part-time positions. The Neighborhood Services Department has been authorized three part-time positions and have been unable to fill those positions. We have been, excuse me, able to successfully fill two full-time positions. And in an attempt to add critical needed manpower, the Neighborhood Services Department is requesting the consolidation of two part-time positions into one full-time position. Due to the shortages of personnel, we're approximately between open calls and pending calls, 200 calls down. The salaries for two part-time positions is about $69,350. The full burden cost of one Neighborhood Services officer is $82,115, a difference of $12,765. Due to the salary savings, this consolidation would not result in any additional funding for this year. However, next year, we would have to address that in our budget requests. That's all I got for you. We just need some help.
Is there any questions for Ms. Tingley while she's up there? Okay.
We're good.
What would counsel like to do? Councilmember Applegate?
Motion to approve.
Councilmember Corey?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor for authorizing the consolidation and turning it into one full-time officer. Is there any further discussion from council? If not, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we are on to Item 9E, Resolution 22-027, a resolution adopting a traffic impact fee schedule.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, counsel.
You're not on.
There we go. There's the button. So as promised, I am back up here. Earlier tonight, you approved on second reading the ordinance granting the City of Fountain the authority to collect this traffic impact fee. And so, in that ordinance is, the way in which you set the fee is by resolution. And so this is the resolution to set those fees. And so, as time goes along, it'll be certainly easier as the council adjusts to the economy and inflation and things like that, the fee via resolution instead of just setting it by ordinance. So that's what you have in front of you tonight here for this resolution. And, you know, I mentioned it for the first reading of the ordinance, but this is the culmination of a lot of hard work by Wilson &amp; Company and doing the study and evaluating the needs and the growth of this community. And then, really putting that into place with Brandy and Christie's hard work on this to get us to this point. So it's kind of an exciting kind of culmination of a lot of hard work and some excitement. And so, any questions about the amounts and the fees, we'd be happy to answer.
Okay, so we had the presentation last council meeting?
Correct.
So...
So these are the same...
This is now adopting that resolution from the recent presentation, right?
That's correct. So we had this one, this same exact resolution as an attachment to the ordinance.
Right.
So it's the exact same as the attachment that's been attached to the ordinance.
Right. Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the audience? Okay, we do have a, if you could please come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself?
I'm Frank Carrick. I'm just a little, I just want to be clear on what was discussed earlier with Councilperson Duncan and the low-income homes. Is any part of this to go to low-income housing, or is it identified specifically to the roads? That's my question.
So it's, this money has to be spent on, directly on the roads.
So what was, what does Councilwoman Duncan's, why do you have to research that? I mean, if this money has to go to the roads, isn't that a moot point or no? See, I'm confused.
Can I jump in here real quick, Mayor?
Yes.
I think the question about the IRS credit is really a question of if the developer who's building the building, who's gonna have to pay us a transportation impact fee for our roads, if they can use the fee that they just paid to the city for roads as a credit, as their own tax credit when they file their own credit.
Oh, I see.
That's what I suspect. Now Troy will research that to see, because the reality is, if that's a little additional bonus that we can use, that might be the kind of thing that we go, and when we're talking to low-income housing, we might say, hey, by the way, here's a little additional credit you could use that for, but we won't actually be able to use that ourselves.
Got that, okay. And so, this study was done by Wilson, and I just want to be clear on two studies. This study was done by Wilson. Is there another study that is being done for a tax increase for roads by Wilson, or not? Are we done with, we're done?
Yeah, we're done. Yeah. And just to expound, just so everybody understands, Troy mentioned it, but I want to make sure everybody's clear, statutorily, these traffic impact fees have to be spent on the projects to improve the system like Troy talked about that are identified in our Traffic Master Plan. We can't take these funds and rebuild the roads in heritage. We can't do any of that. Statutorily, by law, they have to be spent on those projects that were identified.
I see, okay. And so there isn't, there isn't another increase that we're talking about for roads?
No, I think what you're talking about is we have had discussions about possibly joining the PPRTA.
That, maybe that's it. Because there was a $20... Okay.
That's separate.
And that, was that part, is this part of the $20,000 study that we did?
This, yes. This...
This was part of that.
Oh, the survey, no.
It has nothing to do with the current survey that's going on?
No. No. This was involved with the Traffic Master Plan, that we paid for that in addition to the Traffic Master Plan to do the traffic impact fee study. But the study, the survey, you're talking about two solely separate things.
And so, if I understood you correctly, CDOT found $2 million to do some work. So, is there a possibility that maybe we're gonna find some money? I'm always surprised when they find some money to do these roads.
Well, keep in...
Yeah, Brandy's gonna answer that question, because when we, Scott, Todd, Brandy and I all had conversations with CDOT, they have different pots of money that some are set aside for certain things, and I, and so, go ahead, Brandy.
Yeah, they didn't find money per se. They have money, sorry about that, that they put aside for safety projects.
Right.
And the problem is that we had to close Southmore due to this safety issue, because it's working its way into Fountain Creek, as Councilmember Estes is well aware of. And that created a safety issue, because we now have no way for those people to turn out onto 8587 northbound with a traffic light. So it wasn't, they found money, it was safety money that they decided preciously to dedicate to this project.
Right. And when we began these conversations, they actually came back and said, if you can prove that you have a certain amount of accidents at this intersection or near misses or something. And so we had to do a lot of research and find out which, exactly which pot of money we could potentially fall under. And there was no guarantee. It took a lot of research on everybody's parts.
And Frank, keep in mind, the only way we can engage with CDOT, there's really only two roads, 8587 and Mesa Ridge. So they won't come into the city with any of their monies and help us with any of our other issues, $100 million worth. They're just eligible for those two roadways, pretty much.
Okay, anybody else in the audience have any questions? Any council members? And what would counsel like to do? Councilmember Hinton?
I move to motion to approve Resolution 22-027, a resolution adopting the traffic impact fee schedule.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on the floor for, to approve Resolution 22-027. Any further discussion? If not, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. That leads us to Item 9F, Resolution 22-028, a resolution authorizing approval of the Colorado Regional Opioid Intergovernmental Agreement for El Paso County/Teller Region. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening again. As the council will remember, and to kind of give a background history for this item, there was a nationwide settlement with opioid manufacturing and the pharmaceutical companies involved with the kind of proliferation of, and, I'll say, poor communication regarding this particular drug that they kind of created an epidemic in this country. And part of that settlement, and really the settlement, was to work and filter that settlement, those settlement funds, down through states into local communities. And earlier this year, the council approved participation in that settlement. The Attorney General's Office has been the primary focus, the primary conduit through the state of Colorado getting those funds. And so as we continue down this path, that money will continue to flow through the state into individual regions in the state. And so we've been working with El Paso County as a region to establish how those funds should be allocated and distributed. And so the IGA that you have in front of you is with the entire El Paso County/Teller, El Paso and Teller County regions working together to form a council to figure out those questions and to get the money where it's needed to address this epidemic. And so, that's what you have in front of you. As you can probably tell and will remember, this is, this is an area that's, that I'm certainly passionate about. I've seen a lot of the impacts that the opioid can have on a community and on people. And so this is, this is one that I am passionate about that I think is long overdue and can see some great impacts, not only in our specific community here in Fountain, but region-wide. So, you've got this IGA in front of you, what it will ask eventually, and I'll kind of, you know, there won't be a decision tonight on this, this point, but my hope is that you'll allow me to continue working on this. You know, and there are kind of some specific legal issues as this council continues on, and eventually I'll probably come and ask you to be the City of Fountain's appointee on this council as it continues on. But for now, we need to join and create the council, and then we can address that later. I just wanted to mention that. I will note, one thing that Mayor Thompson pointed out is that, kind of on that note, there is a specific reference and confirmed earlier tonight by the county attorney, kind of a mistake in one part of the document that states that there should be only elected officials on the council, and that was never the understanding of the group. And so we're working to fix that. So I would just, any motion you make approving the IGA, I would just ask that you kind of give the authority to allow us to enter into agreement which allows for elected officials and staff members to be on the council. But other than that, I'll stop, I'll get off kind of my soapbox here and answer any questions you may have.
I really appreciate all the hard work you and everyone have done on this. This is a definite scourge on our society, and as people try to get off this, you know, there needs to be a way to use that money. And I appreciate the, and it is gonna come down to a lot of legal work on this, making sure it's done correctly and how the settlement comes down and all that kind of stuff. And some of it could potentially be fairly fast-moving. So I appreciate your willingness to continue serving in that position, because I think it's really, really important to have somebody who's been at the forefront of this writing it. So, do you want us, if we make a motion on this tonight, you want us to make the motion with that amendment on there, or just, or given the authority to make that small change?
We don't know exactly what the change is gonna look like.
Right.
And so probably just the, just the general authority and the general expectation of the council for, to be able to appoint a staff member.
Okay, okay. So just so we're just kind of clear, I don't know if you have it printed out, but on page three, it listed all the voting members, and it could be various elected officials or their designees. But then when you got to the, a couple pages later on Item F, it didn't say, "and their designees" on it, it just said elected officials. And so some of them are definitely, from some of the other counties are gonna be, you know, appointees. It needs to be important that they're, that they're, it just got missed, I think just a couple words got missed, so.
Yeah, and that's, and the county attorney emailed me back right away and agreed. So we'll work to fix that, we just don't know exactly what the fix will be.
Okay, all right. All right, is there any questions from council? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, what would counsel like to do? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution 22-028 to include elected officials and staff members.
Does that work?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, all righty, and then we have Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
Does he need a second as amended?
I think that's, I think that works.
Okay. Just want to make sure we get it done right. All right, so we have a motion in a second for Resolution 22-028 as amended. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if not, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. Oh, and you're standing up there. All right, Item 9G, First Reading of Ordinance 1777, an ordinance establishing a new chapter, Chapter 44, within Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Fountain Municipal Code Restricting Open Fires and Open Burning in the City of Fountain.
Good evening on this one. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna give up my spot here in a second and make Mr. Gates come on up and give his opinion. He's done the primary work on this one. But really, this is an ordinance codifying and being able to enforce our fire restrictions. You know, we've seen it a lot in the, in the last, you know, six months even, the need to be able to, you know, not only tell the community what the expectation is, but to be able to enforce it. And that, that's kind of what this adds into our, into our Title IX to kind of, for lack of a better term, give it some teeth to be able to give, empower the fire department and really the police department to enforce the fire restrictions. So with that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hand it over to Michael Gates to give us a little bit more and to probably be the one to answer questions on this one.
Good evening. I appreciate you guys putting me last.
I appreciate you guys putting me last. Not sure what that was about. I did want to bring up that this.
It's Chief's idea.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. I do want to bring up that we did kind of have something in the fire code that was adopted during the ordinance that I brought up in about two thousand sixteen, seventeen. And it does create violation penalties for the fire code, and neighboring jurisdiction does use that part of their fire restriction and violation of penalties. However, it is very broad. The proposal of the ordinance that I'm giving you tonight is pretty key on to the definitions and the information and to include the punitive charges also. Appreciate that, Troy. So we, instead of putting it in the fire code, we want to remove it from the fire code and put it into the Title IX for the P D, be able to enforce it, not necessarily the fire department in the fire code, to include myself to enforce it. So I'm here for any questions when it comes to what was the proposal.
So a lot of these are things that are already in a fire ban, a ban when they come out. I mean, for example, if I look at a stage-one fire burn now, it already, I already know about all these things. This is just putting it in our code rather than waiting?
It's going to help us enforce fire restrictions. We don't really have anything in place outside of the fire code, which says in the fire code, to enforce the fire restriction. So technically, we, you can have a fire on your property in a fire restriction, and we have no way really enforce it other than me trying to enforce it through the fire code.
Okay. So there's just one on the campfires. I think it should say, in stage one, it says allows. I think it should be allowed. The rest of them all are allowed, not allows. But I just, on the red flag warning, so I know we have, from being on PPACG and working with the air quality control management, that we have a lot of frustration with them, that the air quality alerts they put out are quite often for the Denver metro area, when our air is perfectly fine down here. But everybody restricts their activities on the entire front range when it's not necessarily for us to do it because the, it should be up there or vice versa, right? And we've been working years trying to get them to do that. The red flag warning, is it more specific than that? We're not going to get into where Denver has a windy day and it's perfectly calm down here. They're very, very specific?
It's to the region, Unit two-two-seven, in our area where we're located. And it's through the National Weather Service that measure the, how much wind is going on and how dry it is and how long it's going to sustain. And those red flag warnings are only for a couple hours to most of the hours of a day. So those are just, unfortunately lately, we've seen ourselves in a lot of red flag warnings. That's just the time of cycle we are in and the kind of yearly forecast.
I guess, so you're saying that if they issue a weather service, that it's the same thing as the fire chief issuing a stage-one fire burn?
Now, in a sense, yes. It is, a red flag warning is where you really saw Waldo Canyon Black Forest Fire. When you see those red flags, warnings, that is, we are at the extreme weather condition that fire development will grow rapidly off of a small ember, and it will spread very rapidly due to the winds and the dry weather.
Okay. Councilmember Corey?
I had a couple of questions. So first of all, do you think the county will be, or soon, will they be licking the restrictions at all, or will they keep on with what they're on? And then also, what's the system that they do for finding whether difference between like stage one and stage two and how bad the restrictions are?
So for your first answer, I know it's really difficult when we decide to go to stage two, and all of a sudden, we get a foot of snow and we get rain back-to-back on that. So it does kind of carry into the discussion that every week, I sit down and meet with regional partners, National Weather Service, Forest Service, to discuss weather modeling, fuel moisture content of these. And that's, the fuel moisture is how we determine the stage of restriction that we're going to go into. So what they do is that the Forest Service or the wildland companies that we have in the region go up into the forest, and they pull core samples from, very small core samples from the trees up there. We call them ten, one thousand, ten thousand hour fuels, and it depends on the size of the tree. And they pull the sample out of there, and they're going to, they basically bake it and weigh it to determine the fuel moisture content. And when they get into critical numbers, which I did kind of bring a few of them, and I can pass them out later on, I do send them out to the fire department. But what we're looking for is when we start getting to the red, when we get low numbers of the fuel moisture in the big timbers, that's a very big concern for us. That's why we go to a higher restriction to also known as a burn ban.
Thank you, person.
Is that it? Okay. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, sir. This question is actually for city attorney. It says, "Any person who violates the chapter shall be punished with a fine of not less than two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for each separate offense with regards to fireworks." Does that mean I let off fifty, and because it happened today, I'm paying once for two-hundred-and-fifty dollars? Or if I let off fifty, that's two-hundred-and-fifty times fifty? What specifically does the law say?
I bet you can run fast enough that you don't get caught when you set off your fireworks.
No. I can't. I'm too old.
I think that's a, that's a fair question, and it would depend on how the police officers would write it. But I would imagine they would write a singular event as one incident. So if you lit fifty fireworks off, you'd probably get cited once.
Just make sure you do them on one night.
But then, I mean.
Multiple nights.
And then if the officer left and you kept lighting them off, then you could get a second one, right? And so I think that's, that's kind of the general expectation about how it would work.
Okay. And then my second question. Somebody violates the ordinance, and they catch another house or another property or something else on fire. Is there an increased penalty for that? Or is it just the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars?
No, that goes into state statute at that point, and it is an arson charge.
Okay.
To include woods and prairies, if it is just the neighboring property, that grass or vegetation can also be on the woods and prairie on that charge.
Okay.
So yeah, it's a different charge. This is for violating the stage-two fire restriction or fire ban information. However, if you're burning your neighbor's property or neighboring properties due to your negligence, then yes, that is a state statute charges.
Okay.
So from the P D perspective, they wouldn't write them into municipal court. They'd write them into district court as a felony.
Okay.
Yeah.
I believe that's what happened to the person up in Colorado Springs last week, when he was dumping ashes over his fence and started the fire that.
Yep. That was a woods and prairie charge, and due to extreme weather conditions, a red flag warning, it does bump it up to a class-six felony.
Okay. And then Karen, if you can include that in your article, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Duncan?
So just because we're being recorded in public record, can you give us the non-emergency number? Because I know a lot of my neighbors who are very conscientious about this, and they're, they have nine-one-one on speed dial. So can you give us that non-emergency number?
It's Michael Gates' personal cell phone number.
No, it's Chief Heber's.
Okay. Since we are being recorded, the non-emergency line for the dispatch center is seven-one-nine three-nine-zero fifty-five-fifty-five.
That is not manned twenty-four hours a day, though.
That one is.
That one is.
It is after hours. It goes straight to the dispatch center.
Okay. Good. All right.
Thank you so much.
What's it?
You could have a wait.
You could have a wait because they handle the nine-one-one calls before they handle the non-emergent line. Yes. So we want to get to the heart attacks first, so. Please call nine-one-one if something's on fire, though. Yes, please. Okay. I just want to address the burning trash, trash burning on the last page, page five. This does not affect if somebody wants to pull a permit to do leaves, tree branches, that kind of stuff. This is just, you need to call the trash company, not be burning your trash in the backyard.
That is correct. When it comes down to open burning, the open burning does allow you to properly per air quality permit through the El Paso Public Health Department to obtain an open burn permit. And you can burn it properly within a lot of times and the distances from combustible, other combustible materials and how large piles are. But it comes down to anything above and beyond that, yes, it is, it's considered as trash.
Household trash, yeah.
And that's why we get to the different chemicals that is considered as trash.
Yeah. I just want to make sure, because there are some large acreage around here that I'm pretty sure they still pull permits. So, Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah. I just have a quick question. Can you just clarify as far as grilling? So grills, gas grills, smokers, which is, which is allowed?
So when it comes to a stage-two fire restriction, we want, we want to see it not creating any kind of ember coal, embers that can fly away, coals that actually can get, that need to be discarded later on. So we approve LPG, liquid propane gas, and then the CNG, compressed natural gases. We, we do right now, per the restrictions, we inside of the City of Fountain determine that the electric smoke, pellet smokers are good. However, our neighboring partners don't believe it is, so they've, their studies have shown that on rare occurrences that they can create fires also. We're looking further into that right now. We might have to think about doing a resolution at a later time. Thank you.
So if somebody goes to the park for Fourth of July, and we're, I'm just, this is practicality, right? And they bring a bag of charcoal from Lowe's, that is not allowed under these burn restrictions we would be under?
That is correct.
Okay. All right.
Because the wind picks up, they can blow those embers across, and how do you discard the coals properly?
Right.
So we run into that.
But they can bring their propane grill to the park? Okay. All right. All right. Okay. Anybody have any further questions? Councilmember Estes?
I just had the comment about the burning the trash. We learned that that's a big no-no too with Mountain Vista. Because that's what started the fire down in Mountain Vista, and they lost seventeen homes.
Yes. And that was burning trash.
Yeah. There's speculation that's what was Black Forest Fire, too.
And they had the one down in Lyons where the code enforcement officer went against the right, what they were told to do, and went ahead and started to burn, so. Yeah. All right. So they would not be excused under this if you told them not to do it, right?
They would not be able to burn trash.
Right. Okay.
And Madam Mayor, members of council, that's going to also be part of our public education. These discussions, especially on the open burning, especially getting permits, and we're talking about burning trash, burning out there, is that's going to be part of our public education, you know, out there. It's also going to be an education for us on the fire department. I was just at a chief's meeting last night, and I was talking about, and they call it a type-three burn boss. What does that mean? That means that we are trained to go out there and do assessments for our citizens, you know, free of charge, go out there and tell them what that looks like, so that they're doing what's right. And then if they're going to apply for a permit, what that means, you know, this is eight feet by eight feet by four feet, and it has to be away from here. And we're given those things. And then what that, what that protocol is, is like making sure that they notify an hour before. And they also, we have, our dispatch has been notified so that when there's smoke seen by our citizens, they're not calling in complaints and stuff like that because it's going to be well noted in dispatch, they're going to be notified, and so are we as well. So that's all I have, if you have any questions on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah. I love the sound of freedom that comes from Fort Carson. I don't know what their rules or regulation, I know they got to train, obviously. As far as training, how does that affect the City of Fountain and when they're firing downrange during a stage-two fire ban? So how does that work?
So what we're running to a couple of issues is that the red flag warnings come up out of a surprise. We don't really have that kind of communication with them when it comes down to their training and during our restrictions in place. They don't normally attend our meetings on that, so it's, that's a tough question for me to be able to answer. I might have to lean over to Mr. Triltz over there on, on that kind of information.
I mean, I would have to verify the information, but on federal property, you know, with their planned impact areas they have for training, it's really something that they're controlling on federal property.
Yeah.
So our, yeah, our ordinances and rules wouldn't have any impact on the reservation.
They are required to, when they do a burn, they are required to pull a permit through C D P H E for the air quality.
I only ask just because we have residents, it's like, how can they do certain things and we can't do it here when we're right next to them? So I just, just make sure for clarification, when we're explaining things to residents, that that's the reason, they're on federal property, they have different regulations than, than we do. When we do the public education, I will, we will work with John Triltz on that.
All right. Any further questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions? All right. Seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Duncan, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve ordinance number seventeen-seventy-seven on first reading.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for ordinance seventeen-seventy-seven. Is there any further discussion from council? Okay. Seeing none, please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay. Congratulations. All right. Thank you, everybody, for the great questions and discussion. It's a huge, huge issue we need to be on top of. All right. That leads us to correspondence, comments, and ex officio reports. Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing I want to do is invite the council, and really anyone, to attend the Memorial Day event Monday morning at eight AM at Mayor's Park. That's all I got. Eight AM. Thank you.
Counsel, two items for me.
I'm writing a note down, sorry.
Our two, our tree limb pile yesterday has quickly grown into a tree limb drop-off wall today. And we know it's going to get bigger. So that officially will end on Friday, as we need to get to getting rid of that pile as our hot weather gets back at us this weekend. But also, we have the citywide cleanup that we work with Waste Connections this Saturday. So an interesting discussions we've been having with them, we are going to look at for our fall cleanup day, possibly turning into a cleanup month with them out there and turning it into a voucher system. So we're discussing some of the details on that. But the benefit to the citizens would be, if you've gone out there, or to the ones we used to host are out there, you can get some long lines because of the limited day and the limited hours. So this, the concept that we're talking about, there would be a voucher system, folks would have the entire month to be able to take their loads out there, use their voucher and get the same deal. So rather than one day, thirty days. So we're in those discussions. I'm hoping we can figure out something before the fall cleanup day.
Yeah, the counties had to kind of go to something similar to that with their hazardous material drop-off days. Because we went one time, and it was like a ten-mile line.
Yeah.
So, Councilmember Duncan?
I just have one question. The tree, that the trees that they're bringing, is that going to be turned into mulch?
A little bit of both. Because we're getting such a pile, we can really only handle so much mulch. So we're going to be using both. We're going to have to get rid of some, and then others, we're going to have two chippers out there, putting them into mulch as well. And just one thing for everybody to keep in mind, Colorado Springs have been putting out notices, the mayor's sent a couple over, and then we've picked up a couple. They've asked their citizens for patience, as they have four different forestry depart, or units. So they have specific forestry that that's all they do. And they've said they estimate it's going to take them four to eight months to clean up what they've got in Colorado Springs. So we don't have forestry units down here. We've got a combination of a lot of public works departments, neighborhood services, our city inspectors out there picking up, parks is focusing on the parks, but we've got all kinds of different departments working on it, so just be patient. Our poor ladies that answer the phones here at City Hall have gotten some very nice phone calls and some very crazy demands and different things from folks. So they're dealing with a lot of those calls that are coming in as well.
So just to make it clear, Springs does nothing.
Springs has no limb drop-off.
County?
County does not, that I'm aware of.
So this is a great service for our customers, we're providing for free. And if it fell out of their tree in their yard, they need to bring it to you or have someone pick it up, not just drag it out in the street, right?
Correct. And we've actually got calls, complaints about the students walking down the street, dragging limbs and tossing them in different areas. So you'd be, you'd be surprised at how the dominoes fall, but yeah.
Right. Okay. Don't, take care of it so Mike's not out there in a couple of months telling you, it's a fire hazard, right? All right. Mr. Troy, nothing else? else?
Nothing else for me.
Chief Heber?
Troy had enough tonight. I deferred my time to Mr. Evans.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Triltz?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to give you an update on how we're doing with the first of two surveys that we're going to have out there in the public. Last week, we launched the public safety funding survey. That survey went out via text messages. We sent out, or 9,000 were sent out by Magellan Strategies last week, the company we're working with. And we also launched a web-based link on the main page of our website, and there's also telephone interviews that are occurring within the community as well. The link is, for the survey, is still on our website, right on the main page, right on top. And we have sent out multiple postings through social media. We will have an ad tomorrow in the Fountain Valley News, and I believe there'll be an article about the survey as well in the news. And we're getting a really great response from the community. So the goal was to get at least 300 completed surveys. And so far as of yesterday, we had over 530 surveys completed on the public safety question. The survey's going to be out there until June 1st, and so, you know, the more responses we get, the stronger the results. And so really, really pleased to see a strong community response on that survey. That one will close out on June 1st, as I mentioned, and then we will be launching the following survey that Ms. Carrick was asking about, PPRTA question on June, excuse me, on June 8th. It'll go out through the same way, through text messaging, phone calls, and then it'll be available on all the city, the website and Facebook pages and everything else. So just wanted to provide a council an update on that.
And if anybody asks you, you can't take the text survey more than once, because I tried. I tried just to see.
Yes, that's correct.
I tried just to see, right? If somebody brought that up. So I took it, waited a few minutes, and went back in, and it popped up. You already completed the survey. So I appreciate that.
It does log the device.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there is some control there as far as people being able to take it multiple times. So. And the company that we're working with, Magellan Strategies, has had strong success with these surveys. The last 11 communities that they have worked with, the results of their surveys, they've been correct 10 out of the last 11 times.
And there's a limit, though, if you take it online, on how many times a computer can take it also, is that correct?
Yeah, just the one time on the computer. Yeah, so like we discussed, taking it over to the senior center, you know, taking a laptop over there, and I asked about that, and they said, well, you know, once you take the survey once, you know, you won't be able to do it unless you go out and, you know, clear out the cookies and everything else out of the system to reset it. But they, you know, I've discussed with them, the ability for people to go in and kind of manipulate the survey by taking it multiple times. They're experts in this field, and they said that, you know, in their experience, they just don't find that people are able to go in and manipulate it the way that they approach these surveys. And again, they've had strong success recently with several communities, including Monument, you know, just up the road here last year. So strong response from Fountain residents, and we hope people will continue to take the survey. So please, you know, share the information with your neighbors and go ahead and provide your feedback. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Nothing further to report, thank you.
Mr. Blankenship?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I just wanted to say that we had an opportunity this weekend to get reaffirmation of the level of commitment that we have from our employees, and we also learned how fortunate we are to work in a community in which our residents are very understanding and very gracious. We had a significant amount of power outages starting Friday evening and carried through pretty much through the weekend. But I spent some time Saturday afternoon personally visiting with our employees who were out there restoring power. While I was out on one of the sites, an individual citizen came up, incredibly gracious, just wanted to make sure we were aware of his situation. We had, I think, maybe a couple customers that were frustrated, but for the vast majority, we had very, very understanding and gracious customers. I learned this afternoon that one of the individuals, an elderly gentleman who had spoke multiple times to Lexi Lee, and she was giving him updates and letting him know if he could stay in his house, he showed up today with flowers to thank her for her personal service. But in addition to Lexi, we also had India Mars and Candace Gann, both utilities management assistants working that entire time, keeping people updated and answering questions. We responded to every inquiry we received, tried to give every individual some personal touch. But, you know, for an unfortunate situation, I felt that it was handled very well by our employees. And like I say, I feel we're all really very blessed to have, to work in this community with, where people are very understanding and very gracious.
I really appreciate the crews were out there. I mean, I know it's cold, and I really appreciate them being out there. I even got some people from Widefield that called me and said, "Thank you very much." They were out for maybe 10 minutes. You know, how Fountain Electric, and they wanted to express their condolences also.
Yeah, it was, it was a very positive outcome to a not-so-good situation.
Yeah, thank you. Chief Joyce?
No, ma'am, I have nothing further, but I will say that I've received several compliments from the community about our utilities.
Mr. Gates, anything else? No? Okay. Sylvia? Nothing tonight, okay. IT.
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you for fixing everything up tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, Councilmember Duncan?
I also would like to thank our Public Works Department for all of the hard work that they did, and I do appreciate the updates that were online and all of the Facebook posts that were done, sending it through our phones, that kept us updated so that we'll know. We had people calling all day, but, you know, they really appreciate it, not having, you know, just having the update. So I thought the extra effort to put that on was just awesome. I do want to let you know, Dan, that I walked into the library downtown, the Penrose Library, and they have a display right when you walk in the door, and it is a display of water-saving tips. And they have, they have this three card, you know, the cardboard display that you do in school, and they had all these handouts there. And I have some, and I'll give them to you. They're pretty neat of all the, you know, saving tips on how you can save water. And it was right there when you walk in the library, and I thought that was really neat. I don't think I have anything else. June the 4th through the 8th is support small businesses. And so I just think that we should support our small businesses here in Fountain. We have over 3,000 small businesses here, and please just go out and support without them. You know, our small businesses in Colorado make up 99.5% of the businesses here in Colorado Springs and 48% of the jobs that are here. So please support our small businesses here. I will be at the Veterans Memorial. I did see this morning that Commissioner Gonzalez will be our speaker. He noted that in the, on his remarks today. And Memorial Day is coming up, and I would just like for us to remember those who have given the ultimate sacrifice for our freedom.
Councilmember Applegate?
I was at Regional last Wednesday, and they're working really hard to get that UCMJ 20 code, 21 code in before the deadline.
Yeah.
And to try to save this, because we know what happened to those people in Boulder that are trying to rebuild. They can't because of the codes that came back to them. So Roger's really on top of that, and he talked a lot about it. So that was really good to know.
Yeah, I think it's what, like anywhere from $12,000 to $20,000 added onto the house?
Exactly, right.
Because, yeah, yeah. Councilmember Estes?
I just wanted to give a public shout-out to Jolene Houseman. She was the executive director of the senior center and is moving on to greener pastures. She resigned, and we have Mark Bowers in as the interim director, and just wanted to thank her publicly for everything she's done for the seniors in the Fountain Valley area.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm not sure if this is for Todd, or Troy, or Chief. I've had a lot of residents ask me about trees falling down from another person's property onto their property. Who's responsible for that, and how does that all work? And I just want to make sure I'm giving them the right education.
Have a finger pointing going on over there.
So the, that's one of the most confusing parts of law school, was the tree law. So.
Troy, it's 8 o'clock.
I got that question a little bit earlier this afternoon. Have not exactly researched it. I don't want to speak out of turn on that, but the basic rule is you're responsible for your property line up kind of to the sky. And so if a branch overhangs onto your property and then it falls onto your property, it's been your responsibility to clean it up. So from the city's perspective, if a tree branch falls in the park, it's our responsibility to clean it up. If that tree that maybe its roots are in the park but overhangs onto somebody's fence and falls into their yard, it's their responsibility to clean that up if it's in their yard. Just like they would have the ability to trim that tree that overhangs into their yard, it's their responsibility too. So that is the short answer, but I'll do some research and have a more formal answer as people begin to continually ask that question. But the good advice is always just to be a good neighbor. That is the safest thing to do. I will tell you, me and my neighbor had a great conversation about it. He has a pickup truck, and we just talked about it, and I said, "We'll help, we'll work together to clean up all the branches between his house and mine, and we'll fill them up, and we'll take them to the Metcalf drop-off." And so we don't have to fight about who pays for it because of the service that the city offers. And so that is always going to be the best legal advice, is to be a good neighbor.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
But please tell them not to drag it out into the street.
Yes, for sure. Our folks have received that question multiple times.
Yeah, multiple times.
Councilmember Corey?
So correct me if I'm wrong, 8 o'clock, Mayor's Park for the morning thing, caboose, and then?
Memorial Day.
For Memorial Day, and then VFW at 11:00, as they're flag raising, so.
Yeah, and then 11:15 their program, and then they have a nice barbecue lunch afterwards, just for a donation if you can. If not, you know, yep, so you don't have to cook.
Hope to see everyone there, and we get to take that day to remember all those that gave their lives so we can be free.
Yes. Councilmember Rick?
First, I want to thank staff for the budget presentation last week, taking time out to do that. For the members of the public who are here, the budget that we reviewed is on the city website. So if you have some time, feel free to go in there and look and see what we talked about and provide us with feedback. I want to thank the city staff for being proactive and coming up with the tree branch drop-off point. There were a lot of people asking questions. You guys really stepped up and came to their rescue, made it a lot easier. And finally, to echo Dan, thank you for your response to the utility department. I used to work down in Pueblo. I have several coworkers, one of which who lives in Avondale. It was three days before her power got turned on. She had to empty out her refrigerator and throw out all her food out of the refrigerator, because after three days, it wasn't cold anymore. It wasn't good. So I definitely appreciate the quick response of the utility department. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all righty. I was really excited to see Special Olympics in town. Gosh, the last beautiful day we had. And I want to do a shout-out to D8 for allowing them to use their facilities. They had a great turnout, a lot of kids, not kids, a lot of adults out there running track. They did have some kids there, too, and using the swimming pool. And that was really exciting to see it. And they're always looking for Special Olympians from the City of Fountain. I heard there's not a lot of them. So if you know anybody that might be interested in that, you can check out their website. I went to the VFW installation, and they've got a great team of people over there keeping that place rolling. And again, if you haven't been there for their steak dinner, you need to go. And CML did a great outreach last week, and I thank Colorado Springs for hosting that. Got to see their new city council chambers. They basically shifted it all to the long side, and in case they grow and get more council members and the staff and everybody can actually get up there now. So they did a nice job on that. And again, I just want to shout-out to Brandy again for, you know, working so hard together and getting those different grant monies and stuff, because, yeah, they were telling us no at the beginning, so. All right. So anyways, unless anybody has anything else, we are adjourned.